I call to order this meeting of the Noblesville Common Council. If you will please stand for the pledge of allegiance to Mr. Smith if you will leave this evening.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Ms. Lee's, will you call the roll?
Mr. Boyce.
Present.
Mr. Davis.
Present.
Mr. Elliott.
Present.
Mr. Johnson.
Present.
Mr. Peterson.
Here.
Mr. Schwartz.
Present.
Mr. Smith.
Present.
Mr. Thurston.
Present.
Ms. Wilds.
Present.
Madam President, we have a forum.
Thank you very much. We will move into recognition and introduce Mayor Jensen to talk about these fine young people who are here with us.
Yes. Good evening, Madam President, members of the council. We are joined tonight by some special guests, but before we get to that topic, I just wanted to, I know there are mayor's remarks later on the agenda, I'm probably going to be out taking some photos, so I'm going to take the liberty of adjusting it on the fly, and just wanted to thank so many people who put on an incredible festival this past Saturday in downtown Noblesville. The front porch, yes, they are worthy of that, I would agree. I know many of you were there, I was getting text messages with photos, it was, first of all, the weather gods were on our side on Saturday as well, but I know there's a lot of time and effort that gets put into that. There's also a lot of talk at times, as we grow, are we ever losing any of our hometown charm, and I think Saturday was a pretty big mic drop on that. I truly believe that we are still a community that is America's hometown, and that festival was incredible. So, thank you to all the organizers and all those who put a lot of time in to make that an incredible event. I know so many downtown vendors were appreciative of it, had some great record sales, which is what a lot of these efforts are designed to do, so just wanted to add that plug in there. But the reason we have a full council chamber here tonight, I always laugh, it's great to have a full council chamber of smiling folks, that's not always the case, sometimes when you have a full council chamber, it's for other reasons, but tonight, it's probably one of my favorite days throughout the year. A little backstory, I have to give credit to my predecessor, John Ditzler, in his last year in his term, started the Noblesville Mayor's Youth Council. Council Wilds, I remember you and I going down and speaking to them that year, several years ago, and it's a way to lift up and engage the next generation of Millers. You know, I often talk a lot about making sure that we have a community that's not just great for all of us here today, but is great for our kids and our grandkids, and we want them to stay here long-term. I'm looking at a lot of Noblesville Millers who made that choice to stay here, and we have to continue to invest in them. And I think, you know, not hardly a day goes by that we don't turn on the news and hear just stories across our country of doom and gloom, and so, to be able to engage with the next generation, the next youth council, is just incredibly uplifting. I hope a few of you got to meet them earlier down in the lobby and meet their parents as well, but this group meets every other Tuesday morning at 7:30 in the morning, and they are always excited to be here at 7:30 in the morning, but they engage, and they don't just meet twice a month. Their goal is to really meet and then spring out into the community, and so you will see them volunteering at events. Council Johnson, I know you know at the Turkey Trot every year.
Outstanding.
We get volunteers that are out working with you.
That's 5:00 AM on that.
That is 5:00 AM, so that's why we're doing the 7:30, to get them trained up for that.
Get them ready.
Yeah, you will see them volunteering throughout the year and engaging, they were at the State of the City a few weeks ago, some of last year's members were there helping to give tours, and Drake was even my bodyguard, make sure nobody busted in the door that I was in as I was trying to prep my remarks, so they play all sorts of roles, they're engaged in issues, environmental issues in our community, they're engaged in mental health awareness issues in our community, they are making, quite frankly, our administration better every day by engaging with us, and so, I will say that this is not an easy process, they have to apply, they have to meet certain criteria, they have to come and sit for an interview in person, making eye contact and conversation, Council Elliott can appreciate that, you know, and really, it helps produce the best of the best, and like I said, I hope that they continue to lift up our great city and continue to shine, so, tonight, I also want to thank their parents, who, many of whom are here, I know there are parents, there are grandparents, there are aunts and uncles and cousins who are here to support them, and I think that's incredible, but a lot of them, you know, parents, I just want to say thank you for continuing to invest in your kids, making sure they get here on time, some, I know some moms were probably prodding them to apply for the Mayor's Youth Council, and I appreciate that. You notice there's not a Jensen kid in the youth council, but I'll prod again next year and see if I can get one to do it, but I just want to thank the parents for continuing to support our kids as well, and I want to thank all of you, because without your support, this wouldn't be possible here tonight. Also, I want to quickly thank Lexi Rock and Reese Bowen in our office, and Ashley Diebold, who pour into these guys and gals every week as well, so I'm going to invite Lexi and Reese up, I'm going to step over here, and Council Wilds, if you wouldn't mind reading off their names individually, and have them come up to get their certificate, to solidify their involvement, they're then going to leave and exit and head down to do some more group photos, when all the students' names have been called, I will invite, if you want to encourage the parents that they would like to step and go downstairs as well, they're always allowed to participate in democracy, and you appreciate that, but they may want to join their kids for some photos and be on their way, but just want to, again, say thank you, and thank all of them for stepping up and applying and giving us a great hope for the future of Noblesville. So with that, I'll turn it over to you, Council.
All right, thank you very much, and I promise I will do my best to pronounce names correctly, especially you. So first is Danielle Leininger. Next is Mina Vent. And we have Drake Lockwood. Elizabeth Norris. Ellie Seago. London Albee. Maddie Allen. Brayden Booze. Greta Bupp. Luke Conrad. Royce Haney. Julia Hurstine. Abigail Howell. Grace Idenbach. Hersen Run Carr. Ella Leininger. Nellie Luna. Soren McGlaughlin. Victoria Pierre. Hudson Rose. Olivia Schmidt. Sophia Shields. Bavia Thecker. Ally Thompson. Maya Vetker. We'll give the whole group a round of applause even though they're not here. And yes, parents, if you would like to get up and go downstairs with your kids, we will not be offended, so we'll pause for just a moment. Approval of the minutes from the August 12th budget meeting.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the minutes from the August 12th budget meeting, this is a hand vote, all those in favor, raise your right hand. Nine zero. Approval of the minutes from our August 12th council meeting.
Moved to approve.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the minutes from August 12th council meeting, this is a hand vote, all those in favor, raise your right hand. Nine zero. Approval of the minutes from the August 19th budget meeting.
Moved to approve.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the minutes from the August 19th budget meeting, this is a hand vote, all those in favor, raise your right hand. Nine zero. Approval of the agenda.
Madam President.
Mr. Davis.
I move to add miscellaneous number two, council to hear report on Sister Cities after approval of claims.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to amend the agenda to move miscellaneous item two, a report from Sister Cities after the approval of the claims. This is a hand vote. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Nine zero. And then we need to move to approve the agenda as amended.
So moved.
Second.
It's moved and seconded to approve the agenda as amended, this is a hand vote, all those in favor, raise your right hand. Nine zero, terrific. Petitions or comments by citizens who are present. If anyone would like to make comments, there are white slips of piece of pa, white slips of paper out on the desk, you can fill it out and then hand it to the clerk, and then come on in. But seeing that we don't have any, we will move on to the council committee reports, and Mr. Davis on the Finance Committee.
Thank you, Madam President, we met August 21st, Pete Schwartz, Aaron Smith, Todd Thurston, and myself. Caitlin Kessner gave us her report on the opioid settlement annual report, and Tris P Wheeler gave us an update on property casualty insurance. That and the claims document comes to the council with a favorable recommendation.
Terrific. Any questions of Mr. Davis of the Finance Committee?
Madam President.
Mr. Smith.
I would move to approve the claims as submitted.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the claims as presented, this is a hand vote, all those in favor, raise your right hand. Nine zero. All right. We'll now welcome up representatives from the Noblesville Sister Cities to share a little bit about the most recent visit that we had here in our community. And if you'll please come up and share your name and your address. We've got about five minutes.
I'm Michelle Disilawaki, I'm president of Noblesville Sister Cities, thank you so much for allowing me to come up here again.
You can get a little closer to the microphone so everybody can hear you.
Okay. And we just wanted to thank you for allowing us to come back and talk again really quick. Most importantly, the kids, we wanted them to share their experience this summer that we hosted, and just to allow them to talk and, you know, explain, you know, how it impacted their lives. We are, real quick, my plug, we are really quick, working on replenishing our funds, it costs about $40,000 to put this program on when we host. We have two years off years, but we still have $810 in dues, we have, you know, other operating expenses throughout the year as we do fundraising to work for our third year coming out. So next summer, we're going to Nova Prada, Brazil, so I will be recruiting students from 16 to 18 to go to Nova Prada, Brazil, we're also always looking for volunteers, so we'll probably hit the Mayor's Youth Council as well here in the next, in a little bit. But anyway, most importantly, I want to introduce Jeremy Schmidt and Pearson Hines, and then Abigail Howell, they're the ones that have all the great experiences.
During the Sister Cities Exchange Program, I was given the opportunity to host two exchange students, Laura from Cita della Italia and Gabby from Nova Prada, Brazil. We not only visited around Indiana together, but we exchanged recipes, shared stories, learned about each other's languages and culture, and built friendships that wouldn't have been built without the help of this exchange program. Thanks to Sister Cities, we not only taught others about this place that we call home, but we also learned invaluable things from those who stayed with us. Participating in Sister Cities was one of the biggest highlights for me from this past summer, and it is something that I definitely am looking forward to participating in again if given the chance for next year.
Great, thank you very much.
Yes, Sister Cities is, it's a great program, it was a lot of fun, I got to make, got to make a friend of-
Will you do me a favor and share your name?
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm Pearson, I'm Pearson Hines.
Thank you very much.
And, yeah, it was amazing, I made an Italian friend, his name is Michele, and it's great, now I have a friend from overseas, and my brother's friends with him, and we're going to probably hang out more going overseas and hanging out, but it's amazing, it really gives you perspective, because, you know, our world is full of borders now, and it really gives you perspective that everybody in all these borders are just other people, you know, like, they're just born somewhere else, and it's really cool to see and meet them, because you start to understand that we're really not so different, and it's just a great program, I love it, and I hope to be part of the program again.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Abigail Howell, I was able to host Mariana from Nova Prada, Brazil, and it really, I mean, adding to all of them, it really was such a cool experience, and I know they talked about how like it strengthened, you know, our beliefs that we all are human, and we all are willing to make friendships and grow and just learn to love each other. But I will say also, this helped me recognize that, just how great of a city Noblesville is too. I just moved here, and I will say, half the stuff we did, I had never been to myself, and so, it was just as educational for me as it was for Mariana, and I would say we both grew a lot closer together, and I'm so grateful to have met her, and I'm so grateful to be living in this wonderful city, yeah.
Great, thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Terrific, thank you very much. Okay, we will move on to previously discussed ordinance. Council to consider ordinance number 30-08-25, an ordinance amending the entertainment facility admissions tax. Mr. Hughes.
Good evening, Council, John Hughes, City Attorney, nice to see you all this evening. Before you is an ordinance on second reading, last meeting, on August 12th, we adopted an economic development agreement with Live Nation that continued a ticket tax that has been in place for a long time here in the city, it's a 50 cents per ticket, this just codifies that within our ordinances. I do unfortunately have one change to make on the fly, and I apologize for that, Ms. Lee's. The sole change is this, on page two of the ordinance, you'll see a blank for the date, we just needed to insert into the agreement that we, into this ordinance, that we approved the agreement on August 12th, so we just need to have that, have August 12th in those two places, so, I'm going to think of a motion to accept that amendment, and then a motion to approve the ordinance as amended, is in order, and sorry for doing that on the fly, Ms. Lee's.
Okay, any questions of Mr. Hughes before we make any motions?
No.
Okay.
I need to make a motion.
Yes, to amend.
I'm making a motion to amend.
As presented.
As presented.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded to amend as presented, this is a hand vote, all those in favor, raise your right hand. Nine zero.
Madam President.
Mr. Davis.
I move to approve ordinance 30-08-25.
As amended.
Second.
As amended.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded to approve ordinance number 30-08-25 as amended, this is a roll call vote. Ms. Lee's.
Mr. Boyce.
Aye.
Mr. Davis.
Aye.
Mr. Elliott.
Aye.
Mr. Johnson.
Aye.
Mr. Peterson.
Aye.
Mr. Schwartz.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Mr. Thurston.
Aye.
Ms. Wilds.
Aye.
Nine ayes, zero nays, the ordinance is approved.
Thank you. Thank you very much. We'll now move on to a proposed development presentation. Council to hear introductory information concerning a proposed development on 124 acres north of and adjacent to State Road 32, south of and adjacent to East 181st Street, and east of Promised Road, to be known as Parks at Crossroads. Good evening.
Good evening, Council. For the record, my name is John Davishewitz, I'm a land use professional with the law firm of Nelson &amp; Frankenberger, we represent the applicant Boomerang Development, and present tonight on behalf of Boomerang Development is Cormy Thompson and Cooper Thompson, Jim Schinever, an attorney with our office, is also present, as well as other members of our development team, which represent both Lennar Homes and David Weekly Homes. Our presentation this evening is a reintroduction for a rezoned and preliminary development plan for a for-sale mixed residential community to be known as the Parks at Crossroads. As the council will recall, we were here in May and received recommendations and feedback that after consideration by Boomerang resulted in modifications to the plan and proposed home products. As a refresher, the subject parcel is located- Sorry. Well. Can't hit a preset.
No.
They're coming to help.
Hughes broke it.
Right.
We know it's on 181st Street.
Right, yes. And something.
Nope. No. No. No.
It's not zooming.
Zooming, it's not zooming out. One-way zoom.
Occupied, just wanted with that page. If the council members have access to information at the dais, this exhibit is behind tab two of the brochures that we submitted for consideration, it's the site location. The parcel's 124 acres in size, it's on the north side of State Road 32, south of and adjacent to 181st Street and east of Promised Road, so, follow me, Promised Road. Say we're 32, the intersection of 32 and 38, right there. The site is currently zoned R1 residential, Boomerang Development has filed a request to rezone the site to the Parks at Crossroads Plan Unit Development Ordinance. Adjacent areas to the south across State Road 32, on the south side of 32, and north of 38 are zoned for multifamily, development, commercial, and single-family residential. We'll do our best again. This site plan, which was also distributed to council members and is included behind tab three of your brochures, if you have access to that digitally, it's an updated preliminary development plan, and it's, in summary, the Central Park area was enlarged, several pocket parks have been created, including dog parks and other passive amenities internal to the community. The revised site plan now incl- There's now a total of 324 homes, where previously there was 354, a reduction of 30 homes overall. However, there was a more significant reduction in the number of townhomes. There was 125 originally proposed, where now there's only 82, and also a reduction in two-family dwellings from 66 down to 44 total homes. While the townhomes are included, they're at the southeast quadrant of the development, which is across from commercial on the south side of 32. These townhomes will face State Road 32, with the garages removed and shielded from view from travelers along 32. All those townhomes will provide garages, as well as driveways that accommodate parking. And then, in addition to that parking, there's two different spaces on the plan that provide additional guest parking internal to the townhome area and north of that area, adjacent to one of the dog parks. Additionally, the majority of single-family lots, which occupy the rest of the real estate, were also widened, with the largest lots 92 feet wide at the northeast quadrant of the development adjacent to 181st Street. So, the lots in this vicinity here. Regarding builders, and I'll put up a couple of these and go over them briefly with the benefit of the screen limited. As I indicated, there are two separate builders. There's five different home products total. So, you've got a, what's shown here, side load, the largest of the homes, with a side load garage in the northeast quadrant. Like I said, both David Weekly and Lenar are the proposed builders of these five different product types. Every home within the development will have masonry on all four sides, so there's 360-degree architecture and dimensional fiber cement siding. There's no vinyl siding. That's been something that hasn't been used ever. But the council, as you have seen, has seen quite a few more developments recently, where the bar has been raised, masonry on all four sides of the home, rather than fiber cement siding occupying all four sides. So, there's really a lot more attention as of late regarding home architecture, and that's the case in this development as well. These largest homes that you see on the screen now, again, those are all side loads in that space. Those will be constructed by David Weekly, and the anticipated starting price point would be a million and a half, so $550,000 and above. Oh, I apologize. There you are. Sorry. We'll finish strong. The second example, the homes that we have here, those are one of the front-load products. There are a couple of different front-load products, and the homes in these areas will be at the southeast quadrant and northwest quadrant of the development, both along 181st Street, that northwest quadrant, and then the front, the development adjacent to the pond and State Road 32. These two home products will begin being priced at $385,000, and well as, as well as $530,000 and above. The next product is a product that wasn't included originally, and this is an alley product, so you don't see a garage in the front of these homes. Those homes will be visible from State Road 32. As you enter the development, as you enter the development, there'll be the pond to the right-hand side, and to the left, you'll see the front of all these dwellings. Further removed to the right, you'll see the amenity center and those facilities that are constructed there. These homes will have parking to the back, so there'll be a garage on the alley, as well as available parking and driveways to the rear of the lot, and those homes are expected to start out from $390,000 and above. The next product is the two-family dwellings. This is an example of one of the two-family dwellings. Again, masonry on all four sides. We'll go to ARB in September for ARB to review the plans, all four-sided architecture in that area as well. And then, the last example here, this would be an example of one of the townhomes. This is not the only building. This is a three-unit building. The typical plan is for four- and five-unit buildings. Again, masonry on all four sides, and that's an example of a product that's built today within the Indianapolis market, which represents the type and style of development that we would anticipate seeing here with those 82 townhomes. Finally, and in conclusion, we're going to have another neighborhood meeting. We had a neighborhood meeting in late May. I think we had five or six attendees, in addition to representatives from Boomerang. And we're going to have another meeting that's going to take place on September 4th, so Thursday the 4th. And I believe an email went out to council members just recently with a copy of the mailing that went out to those members. That mailing included all the building plans, the site plan, and a description of the development, similar to what the council seen in your information packets. We'll send out a third notice, and that notice would be of the Plan Commission's public hearing. That notice will also include information regarding the proposal, so those folks interested can attend that meeting. I believe the meeting of the Plan Commission is scheduled for September the 15th here at City Hall. With that, I'll conclude. Either myself, Corby, or others would be glad to address any questions additionally that you might have, and we'll hope that the overhead's fixed for the Plan Commission meeting. Thank you.
Any questions?
Just a little comments. I appreciate your team's efforts to listen to what council had to say in May and reduce the density. I think that provides a better living experience for the folks there. It certainly has lesser impact to our infrastructure and to our public safety folks, but listening to us and hearing, hearing that, again, I appreciate your efforts in making that happen. In addition, I appreciate the variation and the elevations on the homes you've shown us. It isn't a cookie cutter design. There is some variability within the development, and I appreciate that as well. Thank you.
Great. Any other comments or questions?
I'd like to think for the developer, just for ARB, if they can make sure that we look at the front porches when that comes through. That would be great.
Look at front porches?
Yes, just to make sure. All of those look like they were up to snuff, but I know in the past, there have been a few that have gotten through that are wide enough to actually put things under front porch and get to near neighbors. So, we've done a good job of that in the past few years, but just to make sure that those are all the same, that would be greatly appreciated.
Mr. Davis holds his feet to the fire.
Go ahead.
I appreciate what you've done with the townhouses. I think that's much improved over the last couple of iterations. I really like where that's at now.
Mr. Thurston?
And just one more additional comment to add on to what Dave said. One of the things I was pushing for was more green space and more pocket parks throughout the neighborhood, not just in one location, so that there was place to have community. I appreciate the effort you put in to do that. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else?
I appreciate also the looks to the front of the state road. I think you guys improved that a lot. And I also want to thank Mr. Peterson up here, because I know you put in a lot of time with the developer, trying to come up with a little better plan that all of us would approve. So, thank you for that yourself.
I think there's only two houses that face, three houses that face 32 now. That's great.
Correct. And in that pond area, along State Road 32, there'll be a wider right away. So, where you see the fence road today along the state highway right away, we've still got a good distance beyond that, with homes facing State Road 32 rather than backing up.
I know that ARB, we've spent a lot of time with Choice Hand, putting X's on plans that are supposed to be special, so I appreciate that you've already committed to foresighted architecture. That helps us save a lot of time.
Yes, sir.
All right. Thank you very much. We'll see you after Plan Commission.
Thank you.
All right. We will move on to miscellaneous item number one. Counsel to consider resolution RC-30-25, a resolution to opt-in to participation in the Purdue Pharma opioid settlement. Mr. Hughes.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the council, John Hughes, City Attorney again. We spoke about this in executive session, and for the reasons discussed in executive session, I recommend that you approve this resolution opting into the Purdue Pharma settlement for opioids. Happy to answer any questions that you have.
Any questions of Mr. Hughes?
Honored Attorney.
Yes.
I recommend that we make a motion that we approve miscellaneous number one, RC-30-25.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded to approve resolution RC-30-25 as presented. This is a hand vote. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Nine zero.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. We're now to council comments. I'm going to echo Mayor Jensen's comments about the porch festival. You know, that started off as an idea, and with a few bands and some people coming out, and it just continues to grow every year. They've added food vendors and beverage vendors and all sorts of things, and it's just a great example of hometown Noblesville. And so, congratulations to that whole group.
Agreed. Who does the street department too? They did a great job of busting it out after the event too. It's a really great team.
We also need to thank the homeowners who provide their porches, so that that is the stage for those different bands. So, Mr. Peterson and-
Happy to do it.
... lots of people. So, thank you all very much. Anything else?